Matthew's Lee in there?
I'm in here.
I need to add two bills to the add-on.
It's an add-on? Can you email it to me real quick?
Yeah, Cushing Systems. For fourteen thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Okay, hang on. What assistance?
Cushing Systems. Cushing.
Uh-huh.
For fourteen thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy?
Fourteen thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Seventy-five.
And another one. All covered, ALL covered.
Is that?
Okay.
Yes.
For twenty-one thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Was it payments?
Yes.
I have you.
Not yet. Do we want to just walk through getting into Zoom or joining a meeting?
No, we don't call it.
Okay.
I was like, no, we have to quit.
Now say, call me if you have a problem. Call me if you have a problem.
Thank you, Lord.
It's okay. I can brush it twice.
Bebe, I got your bills up.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for taking out my slack. My slack. I think it needs to be refilled. It just doesn't. That stamp thing up there? Oh, okay. I have one at home and even if you don't have a stamp in this morning. I'm hearing noises these days. I'm gonna have to. I have to go back. On the Mr. Max is on there. Okay.
Who's there?
Mr. Parker. Those are those proclamation for the show guys.
Commissioner Reeves and Commissioner Wilson are looking good today.
It's far time. That never happened.
Good morning, Bobby.
Good morning.
Greg, are you present in the courtroom today?
You will leave some documentation this morning? Okay, I'll get you.
Hello? Hey. Uh-huh. Oh, you showed us a picture of you.
We know that.
Um. Okay, when you. There's something on the other one. Um, is there anything on there on the bottom where it looks like there's a video and microphone that you? It looks like maybe there's a line across it or it's written. You need to click on it? We did a practice run from yesterday to make sure they knew how to do this. Now that where you can unmute it or is it showing that you're in the meeting?
Nick, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
You go back there many years.
Okay. He's got a thing about his pocket. Leon said you joined the meeting. Nick, is he in? Yeah, I mean, he's trying to get. Okay.
Okay, check to get up for James again.
We're just having trouble.
I don't see him.
Getting the link to come up. And you can actually join in through Zoom without. Is your video turned on at the bottom, can you tell? You see your picture without ours?
That's going a little more cheap. That's fine, that's how you do it. Yeah. I feel like it changes, Miss Brothers.
It's a good talk.
Yeah.
Got me up here? Okay, yeah, he just joined you in. You're good. Okay, good. All right, wonderful. Can you hear us okay? Thanks. Leon, can you hear us okay? Okay, all right, go ahead. If you have to unmute that button at the bottom, then you can unmute. There you are, we see you.
No pressure, but.
Thanks.
There you go. Look at the.
See if these are comfortable straps.
Don't really get too short room.
It's a good exercise. Just wait, wish to read. Next talk to tell them.
Okay. Let me drop that.
We did, we did a full practice run yesterday, so.
Let's see, Leon, not in his pajamas. It's cute.
Had pants on.
Yeah. Let's see Ricky Brown's here by phone.
Two times.
He can't be in the action game.
So we got Dwayne, David Douglas, Bobby Rader, Matt. Sarah.
Same girl.
Yeah, it's not. He's on. Ricky Brown's here. Michelle.
James, I'm asking you something.
Participants are here. Dwight's in the presidential. No. It has a thing on Zoom where you can pick up my own background. It's got a whole bunch of different ones you can. It's.
Keep everybody hitting last line?
A little better. Be back when it's called.
Yeah. More guns going off.
Ricky.
Maybe they listen.
Just a holiday thing.
Yeah.
If you disturb it, it's nothing major. Four, five, four, five rounds.
I had it in Spanish when he sent me a. That would say thank you for doing that in Spanish. I was like, okay.
Good.
Kim says, I'm on Kim Harris, I'm on the phone watching, but I wasn't able to log in.
She's what?
On the phone and watching, but I wasn't able to log in.
On the participant thing? She wasn't able to get through on the participant thing?
Oh, no.
I don't know who the ones on the bottom are. One is got me David Douglas. He didn't have any problem. Logging in the last. That's our next.
Ray, did you get her text message?
You what?
You get Kim's text message?
Yeah. Don't use send it back to Kim, did you not?
Yeah, I guess she said she couldn't, yeah, she's on the phone.
Good morning.
There you are.
Is she there then?
Good morning.
Yeah, she's on the phone.
This is Kim.
Can you get your video to work?
I could not.
Is it like a movie camera thing at the bottom that you have to click on sometimes?
Right, and it it wouldn't let me move forward, logging in.
Oh, because everybody needs a free account to use the Zoom app on.
Okay.
We'll work on it next time.
Okay. Do you have Zoom downloaded for your phone?
I'm sorry?
Do you have the Zoom app on your phone?
No, not yet.
Okay, that's that's worth saying again.
Still missing a bit?
I haven't had any trouble. We did it yesterday. Movie camera centered. Do you want to go ahead and start, Jay, and let them work on it? It'll be a minutes where you get to the voting.
All right. Yeah. Sure, you can do that. I'm gonna start till the chief says we can start.
Okay.
Go for it.
Go for it, all right. Morning, everybody.
All right.
Everybody hear me okay? This new information technology is pretty, pretty good thing to have. It's. Regular meeting, Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas, April the fourteenth, twenty twenty. And we call meeting order and this time, Lee, if you would lead us in our pledges and then Glenn, push me to leave some application.
I see American flag. I pledge.
Pledge and to. States of America.
Now face the Texas flag.
Glenn, please send the application, please.
Father, we join together in prayer this morning from different places and with technology. We thank you for that opportunity, Lord. We do thank you for your many blessings of this county and this court. We ask that you continue to give this court wisdom during these changing times, Father. We ask that you continue to give us grace, keep our attitudes and our spirits Christ-like, Father. We ask a special blessing on our medical, police, sheriff, and fire first responders, Lord. Continue to bless and keep Liberty County safe. All these things we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
All right. First thing up is a proclamation for our, the National Safe Digging Month. Now, something we probably all need to pay a little bit of attention to because it's anybody that's ever been in the contract business will tell you, digging is quite expensive if you dig the wrong spot. It. I can tell you just from my experience. They've telephone truck line up before we had the days of. Of all this wireless business going on. That was not marked correctly by the telephone company. As we started digging great things, we dug up a truck line. So I think it was about a thirty thousand splice line and it cut off all the phone service from Houston, the whole lot. So the only thing that saved me was I had my stamp on the drawing and the engineer of record for the. The phone company could also put his stamp on the drawing. And I didn't get charged for that particular incident. I almost tell you what it probably been way, way more than a million bucks before it was over with. So something to think about. Anyway, that's just past history. Every once in a while, we get to get off a little bit of history here. Whereas each year, the nation's pipeline infrastructure is jeopardized by unintentional third-party damage. And caused by those who fail to call eight-one-one to have underground lines located prior to digging. And whereas undesired consequences such as service interruption, damage to the environment, personal injury, and even death are potential results. Whereas reducing damages to public safety at eight-one-one provides potential excavators and homeowners a simple number to reach their local one-call center, request pipeline locations at the intended dig site. And whereas the education of safe digging practices, excavators, and homeowners can improve public safety by making a simple call to eight-one-one advance of any digging project, waiting the required amount of time, respecting the mark lines by maintaining visual definition throughout the course of the excavation, and finally, digging with care around the marks. And whereas all parties agree that safe digging is a shared responsibility. Now therefore being resolved, Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas, just hereby proclaimed, April twenty twenty. As National Safe Digging Month in Liberty County, Texas, we encourage excavators and homeowners throughout the county to always call eight-one-one before digging, and this is signed on the fourteenth day of April, twenty twenty. And Phil Barker and James Lawrence, Peyton Ross, Michelle, all come here. Y'all online with us there, but I see Peyton?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I sure can.
Yeah, this is a bit new technology for me as well. I would like to say thank you. I would like to say good morning. I'm Peyton Ross. I'm the Shell Pipeline Asset Operations Manager for our Gulf Coast and Mid-Continent region. In this role, I'm responsible for the safe and reliable operations of all of our pipelines and terminals in Texas, Louisiana, and the Midwest. First and foremost, I hope you and your families are staying safe and healthy during these challenging times. Further, on behalf of Shell Pipeline, I would like to thank the Liberty County Commissioners Court for passing a proclamation recognizing April as National Safe Digging Month. At Shell, our top priority is protecting the public and the environment in the communities where we operate. Third-party damage remains one of the industry's biggest threats. And when individuals dig without calling eight-one-one, serious incidents can occur like the one you described. National Safe Digging Month serves as a reminder to homeowners and contractors to always call eight-one-one before beginning any digging project, no matter how large or small. For this reason, we really appreciate you partnering with us to get the message out and bring extra attention to this very important aspect of pipeline safety. We can't do it alone, and it's especially important during this unprecedented time as many residents are doing landscaping projects, installing fences, putting in pools, or doing other outdoor products while staying safely at home. I'm sure no one wants to cut into a neighbor's cable and disrupt their internet service while so many are working or participating in online school classes from home now needing the internet service. So again, thanks for your time, recognition, and continued support and commitment in this area. We certainly value it. I do want to recognize our right-of-way supervisor, James Lawrence. James knows everything about our pipelines in your area and ensures they get marked when an eight-one-one call is received. I'd also like to recognize Phil Barker, our public awareness lead. Finally, on behalf of Shell, I would like to say thanks to all of our healthcare workers and first responders. We appreciate all you do. Stay safe and healthy. Thank you.
Appreciate y'all, Peyton.
James, you want to say anything? I don't know if James is still on, he might have dropped off, but. He might have dropped, but I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said I'm still on, Peyton. Thanks for the recognition and thank you guys for recognizing this day in April as Safe Digging Month. Like you said, I'm the right-of-way supervisor for Texas and a part of Louisiana. And your support in this matter is really appreciated. Thank you very much and God bless all of you. Thank you.
Thank y'all, appreciate. I did one time accidentally cut a pasture's phone line three times. They could talk that way.
Happened the third time, yeah, I can see that, yes.
Anyway, that's been many years ago, but it was a good lesson, believe me.
Yes, yes.
And here's your proclamation, fellow, just let y'all know, and we'll give you a copy of this too, okay?
We really appreciate that, thank you so much.
Appreciate y'all.
Okay. Goodbye.
Regular meeting agenda, set agendas, everyone had an opportunity to look at this. And if so, are there any additions that we might need to note?
Yeah, I need to add the distribution of the hand cleaner to first responders.
I'd like to add two bills to be paid, Judge.
Yes.
Cushing Systems, fourteen thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. And all covered, which is IT services for Conica Minota for twenty-one thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars.
All right.
Dwayne, who was the first vendor?
Cushions.
Thank you.
Second was all covered.
Thank you.
All right. Any additions, we're okay?
I can motion to approve. I'll second the motion.
Got a, with the additions.
With the additions.
Got a motion for Bruce, second, Greg, approved. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Please use your hands so everyone can see.
There you go.
Put it there. Uh-uh, no, he's, no, he did, didn't he?
Who'd we drop, Leon?
Looks like, looks like a cell cut out.
Her boo's still on there.
He's still.
Yeah, they do.
There you go. Leon, they're probably caught on the trail, wasn't they?
Yeah.
Leon, you with us?
Okay, we'll go ahead, I'm down number five. Consider approve advertising for bids on covets. And Harold, are you here with us today? Let's see here. I think this is normal move for this, this kind of year.
Yeah, it's normal, not, I'm moving with approval. Second.
Yeah, motion Greg, second, for Bruce to approve. Purchasing agent, Harold, see you on the app for bids on covets. All favor say aye. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number six, consider approve the acceptance and award for bid number twenty oh five for grade one and two limestone base. If y'all had opt-in, look over this and if so.
I'm gonna approve that also. Second.
Got a motion from Greg. Second for Bruce. Approve the acceptance and award of bid number twenty-five of grade limestone base. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, Dave. Now see you hand there, Boo, thank you.
Is your volume not working there, Boo?
He's got it muted.
Oh, he's got it muted.
Okay, number seven. Consider approve the way the penalty and interest on account number five-five-nine-eight-nine of the amount of ninety-four dollars thirty-three cents for taxpayer Neil Foster Holdings LLC. Brother Ricky, there with us today?
Jake, y'all hear me?
Yes.
Somehow it dropped. Somehow it dropped me. Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
There it is. Yeah, it's in the back.
I want to go back and revisit, I want to go back and revisit item six.
Okay.
I'd like, I'd like to approve this, but let's approve it for a period of up until June the thirtieth. I understand it may have possibly been some, some companies that either didn't receive the bid or because of lack of personnel to this virus. That may not, may not have had the opportunity to bid on this. So I'd like to, I'd like to go back and reconsider, make the motion that we approve this through the period of today through the end of June thirtieth. And let's let Harold go back out and reissue some bids, some additional bids on this.
Matthew, I'm not really sure about the one with the bid for that short term. Unmute.
There we go, sorry. I was just pulling it up right now to see if, if we can do it for that. It's just a new question for me.
Yeah. We've already approved it, can we research that and if we can bring it up next time if we need to?
Sure, yeah.
Let me, this is Ricky back. Sorry. Let me, this is Ricky back.
Resend them.
Yeah, we can resend that.
Take them.
We can do that.
Do a re-apply next time?
Yeah.
Why don't we do that? I'm moving.
You can sit anything over. He always stands just for the warning. He can sit a pack over.
On how many bids we got.
I'm moving, we, we throw that. Pro one.
I'll say a second.
Okay, hey, Leon?
Yeah.
We already, they had a motion, second to approve. Greg has gone back and said we're going to rescind that vote, so, and I got a second from Bruce to rescind the vote. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, what I would like to do in this case, since Harold's not here, I'd like to table this until the next meeting, so we can get some clarification in case there's not bid, the amount of, is it that we need?
Let me ask you, and this will be a, this will be a question for Matthew. As I understand it, we only had one bidder come in, and there's a high probability that other individuals or other companies weren't aware of.
Because of the circumstances, right? Your, your concern is that they didn't receive notice and couldn't provide a bid because of all the upheaval that the coronavirus has caused.
Correct.
Well, at this point, y'all could very easily, right now, you've rescinded the approval. There could be another motion to go out for bids again, and, and then you could take it that way.
Will you do that if I bid on the agenda?
I guess the only thing that was on the agenda, that's correct, was acceptance of the award for the bid. So, yeah, we probably need to put it on the agenda again for, to, to publish the request for bids and then do it again, yeah.
So, so you saying that we can go ahead and approve this bid today, but then we'll go back out for additional bids?
I'm not saying that, no. I, I don't know that that's the case. I'm trying to look into the statutes real quick and see if there's something directly on point, but my, my bet is that there isn't, and it's going to take a little bit longer to find out. It's probably better to leave it where it's at, and then at the, depending on how that comes out, you know, put it on the next court to go out for bids again, and then, you know, within the appropriate amount of time, come back and approve a bid.
All right. Leon, I would really prefer to table this and get Harold to go out for bids again. That way, it looks like it's going to be a fair.
I understand, I need rock though. That's, that was my point, is that we could, you know, I spoke with Harold about this last night, and he felt that we could, we could go ahead and approve it for this timeframe from the vote today to the end of June. That would give him sufficient enough time to be able to get out some additional bids. But it's going to be a, you know, it's going to be a ruling by Matthew.
Yeah, I mean, off the top of my head, I don't think that it's a problem to do, you know, multiple bids a year, because it's still, you know, an open kind of procedure, but I, I would like to kind of make sure, you, I mean, I suppose you could make the, if y'all wanted to approve the current one, you know, because all indications are that that was done appropriately, was, is approve that purchase contingent on, you know, legal analysis and review by my office.
This might be a strange question there, are y'all in a bind for limestone?
Yeah.
Okay. Then while we make the motion to approve until June thirtieth, that will give Harold enough time to, to, to get some additional bidders in, then we can go back and reevaluate prior to June thirtieth day.
That'll work for me.
When is the existing contract run out?
Yeah, I don't know.
I would think so, the thirtieth, third first.
We can still find under the existing contract, huh?
Yes. And this is just for grades one and two limestone base.
Okay.
Five dollar.
It's ten dollars today, we're sitting. Okay, what's court's pleasure on this then? For grades one and two, if y'all want to do it, approve this bid until June thirtieth, that's fine, if you want to hold off and wait until Harold comes back with more bids in, it's up to you.
I'd kind of like to table it until we get some clarification on this a little bit, unless we got a, a bind and take it back to them.
I, I think I'd have the tendency to agree with Matthew. Let's go ahead and approve this contingent that we get a legal ruling from Matthew on this.
Want to make that motion, Leon?
Yes.
Second.
Haley called this bad, Haley.
Lee says she has the motion. Hey, see, it's, it's nice, Sheriff having a lawyer sitting over here next to me, so I know it wasn't all in this interpretation. I'd hate to have to do that in Spanish today, I'm here too. All right, we got a motion, Leon, second for Bruce, to accept this bid, attention upon Matthew reviewing and approving the date and the.
One other question, well, this bid, this bid that they gave was for a year. You think the bid, they want on the bid for a couple of months?
Well, a couple of months is included in the year.
But I mean, they're, they're kind of selling it for a whole year, but they can get you a better price to, you know, sell to you for a whole year than they can for this. Yeah, I just thought, I don't know.
The problem, I don't see it as a problem, Greg, because as of this time, we're not receiving, I don't think on the bid sheets, I don't have it in front of me, but we're not receiving this great of rock. It's a smaller, it's a smaller limestone.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second right now to approve the short-term contract, on Matthew's interpretation of the legality side of it, and then also the acceptance of this contract by the party, question, for till June the thirtieth, and that's why I'm reading this right now. Is that what everybody's intention is?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Now that we got that cleared up, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, aye. Yeah. Move your right hand eleven. There you go.
Was that aye or a nay?
Did we ever get Richard, Richard here?
He's here, but I don't, he's here twice.
Okay, that was three, four, and one against.
It was great.
Yeah.
It was against.
Great.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that did, that passed. Number seven, consider approve the weight of the penalty and interest on account number... Did Rick ever come on board with?
He's here, but I just, I'm trying to figure out his audio.
Okay, the account number five-five-nine-eight-nine.
I used to say.
Yeah, that's the right.
It's not, we can't pick him up?
Yeah. Eighty-nine and ninety-four dollars, thirty-three cents for taxpayer Neil Foster Holdings LLC. Brother Ricky, you there yet? We're going to pass on this when we come back to, just a little. Okay, number eight, consider approve the reappointment of members of Liberty County Housing Authority Board as follows. Ryan Daniel, Ultra Harrison, Clint Bush, these are two-year terms, expiring in March of twenty-twenty-two. So far, I am very pleased with the Housing Authority Board. And if y'all know, just about a year ago, we came back and got all these terms reestablished to where they're on track, and we can, and we can actually have a suspense date that we can follow, wherever they're starting to come up and be short-term, and either approve their position again, or go out and look for somebody else. Right now, I'm fine with, with the way things are working over at the Housing Authority Board, but I appreciate your consideration of redoing these three persons for their two-year terms.
I agree with you, and I approve.
Second.
Got a motion Greg, second Bruce. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Leon, you got your hand up?
Yes.
There you go.
George, Ricky Brown.
Ricky Brown?
Aye, we'll go back to seven.
He's down here.
Okay, let's go back to number seven. Brother Rick, it's considered approve the weight of the penalty and interest on account for five-five-nine-eight-nine, the amount of ninety-four dollars, thirty-three cents for taxpayer Neil Foster Holdings LLC. You want to give his money back?
Yes, sir, I do. He's already paid his base tax, and he's my landlord, so count those two things in factor. It was a, an error in the address sent out by CAD, so we're going to, we're going to give him a, a break this time.
All right. What's court's pleasure?
Thank you, both of you, to approve.
Second. Got a motion, please, Greg, to approve. All favor, raise your right hands. There you go.
Are you?
Right. Look out, that was your left hand.
What, Greg?
That was your left hand.
I support you. Ah, yay.
Hey, we can have some fun with this attitude stuff, I guarantee. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine, consider approve adopting an order authorizing sale of fireworks for Memorial Day. Bill, are you here with us today?
Yes, sir, I sure am.
What do you want to do on this on Memorial Day?
Well, the court's pleasure, not sure how far this Corona nineteen is going to go, but we're, we're looking at the twenty-fifth of May for Memorial Day. We, it's, it's kind of a toss of the coin.
Past years, we always do, New Year's Eve, do Fourth of July, Memorial Day. That's going to be a question about, are the fireworks stands open for Memorial Day?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be a little tough. We're cutting a close comparison to what we're faced right now, but we still need to put it on the agenda to either approve or decline.
My only problem, Bill, right now would be, city's first responders, such as volunteer fire departments, will they be able to be out in force during that time period? You know, in case this crisis extends beyond the end of May, and if we were in a drought period, that's, that's the two big handles, and I would not want to put any undue stress upon any first responders whatsoever, especially at this point in time when there is.
No, I, I completely agree with what you're saying, Judge. We are cutting it close here, and, but we did, we did need to put it on the agenda to vote on whether we want to pass it and allow them to sell or decline. We need to put it out there to make sure that they understand not to open their stands.
What's court's pleasure on this?
All add this as well, who knows, you know, what, where we're going to be at the end of May, but this is not, would not on our current order be considered an essential retail or an essential activity?
Right.
So if for some reason, you know, the emergency orders, executive orders are extended, you know, you would be in, in one hand granting something that's non-essential and then taking it away in the form of an executive order. So if y'all are inclined to, to do it, you could make it subject to some sort of, you know, any executive orders that might be issued by Judge Knight during this state of disaster.
Leon, what do you think on that?
I agree with what Matthew's saying.
I do too.
You ready? You can unmute there, buddy. There you go. One more time, Boo.
Yes, sir, I agree with it.
Okay, all right. So the motion would be to approve, but.
Seven to.
Seven to.
That one or that one.
All right, we got a motion for Greg.
Second.
Second for Bruce.
He wasn't having to speak up there.
All in favor say aye, or raise your right hand. That's your left hand, Leon. Motion carries. Okay, number ten, consider approve transfer of twenty-nineteen American Airboat, twenty-twenty boat trainer, seventeen Chevrolet fifteen-hundred pickup to Liberty County, Constance Precinct Five for emergency responses. Possible hundred, two other officers are certified and licensed to operate the airboat, and this is from Commissioner Reeves.
Do what?
Do you have any comments?
Yeah, well, David's certified and his people are certified, they're also lastens to rat tickets, you know, from boat now and all that, and I think it'll be valuable to give it to Precinct Five because they're all certified from this grant I got, awarded it to them to work with the rest of the county and crisis and needs with it.
Matthew, if you had an opportunity to look over that grant and see if that would be a transferable issue?
No, I haven't. That was, that was my question. I was wondering if either David Hunter's officer or the Commissioner's office had reached out or to, to the folks who gave us the money, make sure that they're fine with it.
Yes, David Douglas did, and we can, long as it stays in the county to another county entity, you know, they're good with it, but it's got to be stored on county property, which like going to be kept at Precinct Two's barn out here on seven-eight-seven.
Pardon me?
If my memory serves me right, was it at the same time you was trying to get this, the sheriff was also applying for the same grant, and you had got it because you had applied for it first? And the reason I'm asking is, why are we giving this to Constable Hunter instead of Sheriff if you're going to give it to anybody? sheriff if you're gonna give it to anybody?
Well, he's already certified in the county. Some crisis comes up now, you know, we don't have to do any training or anything else. And whatever, it'll still be just file but through any, uh, if sheriff needs it, they'll go help the sheriff for whatever.
Bobby?
Yes, sir. I, in the grant, I had, uh, our grant, as you know, was, a request was higher. We had included in there the training for four people. We have one person right now certified to write tickets in the Marine like, uh, Constable Hunter does. There's two more people that have been passed the first test, but still have to go to Parks and Wildlife to pass the second test to be able to do that. We have reserved spots, if we had an airboat to certify with, for four to six people. We've already got that secured, uh, just waiting on the airboat to do it. I'd like to have the airboat, but it's y'all's decision what to do with it. Uh, as you know, we're working twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and I'll have people certified on each shift to do that.
Judge? Judge? I think, uh, my statute on all transfers of property within the county government, the, it has to be approved by the purchasing agent before that can be accomplished.
It may approve by.
County have to be approved by Harold before they can be transferred within the department, within departments.
Well, I don't have a problem getting it, what I'm, but I, didn't we at one point, uh, agree that, you know, we don't want to go out commissioner, that we don't, oh. We don't transfer. We don't transfer. Uh, I know we had problems with that, uh, at one time before for when I commissioned transfer everything to. All their assets out to other commissioners, yeah. And was that a policy that we adopted or was it something we just discussed? You remember that, Leon?
It was a resolution. And, uh, any, any move transfer drills had, or, or equipment had to be, uh, uh, approved through Commissioners' Court.
Okay.
Well, there's our purchasing agent not here.
We're still kind of at a standstill because this has to be approved by the purchasing agent. We're not there yet. So I prefer to have this table to, we have the opportunity to visit with Matthew and, and Harold. They can, uh, ascertain whether or not, uh, we can legally transfer this and move from there. I mean, this is not something that we have to do today. We can come back and do this in two weeks.
With that being said, I make a motion to table this. Can we get with Harold?
Yeah, motion Bruce, second Greg to table. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
You'll raise your hand, Leon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll come back and re, revisit that when we get in touch with Harold. But y'all know, uh, Harold's wife has been in the hospital and, uh, she just got out what about four days ago, maybe? It was, she was in Herman, uh, in intensive care for a while and they thought she had the virus, but actually it was something else, but, uh, that was a Halloween moment when he got to finally get her home out, out of Houston, so, um, let's keep our prayers up for, uh, Carrie and Harold. We'll get back with Harold as soon as he, he gets back with us here.
We got a checklist with us?
Good morning.
There he is, there he is, okay.
Number eleven, consider approve request for organization of parents to build a textile transportation infrastructure fund grant.
Yes, sir. How is everybody this morning?
About time.
Good. Uh, Texas Department of Transportation has opened, uh, the gates for the, uh, TIF competitions this spring. Those, uh, those applications are due very, very shortly. Uh, I picked up on a project. I visited with Commissioner Arthur about it. It's County Road twenty-two oh four, I believe. And, uh, that's up close to the Cleveland Airport. And we've put together a project on it, and the thing that's interesting about it, all of the engineering work has been done on this project already by H R Green. So we have a shovel-ready project in hand. What I'm gonna propose in the transmittal I sent to everybody, I said that there was a twenty percent match requirement. That is not correct. It's a ten percent match requirement because of the underserved nature of Liberty County. That means that we've got a one million ninety-four thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollar project, and out of that, we will have to come up with a hundred and nine thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. Now, I propose that we go ahead and get the grant and we'll make the funding work out later, but in looking at this thing, it looks like Liberty County could plug in thirty-six four seventy, the city of Cleveland could plug in thirty-six four seventy, and the Cleveland E D C could plug in thirty-six four seventy, and that'll get us to our ten percent match. Commissioner Arthur, this is in your precinct. Do you have any comments that you'd like to make on it?
No, I think it's, I like the project, I, I really do, uh, it serves us well and Cleveland well too, because they've got some industry out there by the side of the airport. But they've been wanting, this project done for quite some time, David, if I'm not mistaken. Matter of fact, it's probably about two or three years they've been talking about this project. So, uh.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I think considering what, uh, precinct two would have to include in any kind of a infrastructure, uh, in kind service, uh, would far exceed thirty-six thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. So I don't think that's gonna be a problem as far as I, I can see what we need to kick in to make this work, if we can get the other two entities, Cleveland and their E D C's to, uh, contribute as well. So I'm good with this one if everybody else.
I'm good with Cleveland, they're very supportive.
Okay, good. What's Court's pleasure then?
Thank you most to approve, second.
Yeah, motion Bruce, second Greg to approve. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number twelve, consider approve preliminary plat request for the in estates subdivision section two. And where we going? Where we gonna hide an estate at today?
Well, this is, this is the second installment on this, uh, this subdivision. Uh, these are five to ten acre lots. Uh, they're located on three oh one north, I believe. And, uh, the tour eighteen people are putting these together. And again, this is their second section. They've sold out their first section, which they planted about six months ago. So this is a request for a preliminary plat. Uh, L J A Engineering has reviewed it and, uh, they have approved the preliminary plat request, and their letter of approval is contained in your, uh, agenda material.
Thank you most to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion to Bruce, second Leon to approve. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number thirteen, consider approve the final plat request for the Santa Fe subdivision, section six.
Gentlemen, this is, uh, Trey Harris's Colony Ridge's, uh, latest, uh, proposed plat development. Um, they have submitted all the paperwork on this. It has gone through L J A Engineering and has been approved by our consulting engineer. So I'm gonna recommend to you that we approve the final plat request for Santa Fe subdivision section six.
Make a motion to approve.
Aye. Motion from Leon, second for Greg to approve. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Come on, Leon.
Aye.
There's one chair. Number fourteen, consider approve the plat provision for the Santa Fe subdivision section one. Okay, David?
Uh, yes, sir. This is a request that we've had in-house now for about six to eight weeks. Uh, the, uh, replat on Santa Fe subdivision section one. What's happening is that, uh, they're enlarging a, a right-of-way through there. They're putting in a twenty-five foot drainage easement, and that impacts lots seventeen thirty-two through seventeen forty-four and lot one seven four six. Now Colony Ridge owns all these lots, so it's not a big issue with them. This particular request has been advertised in the newspaper, and, uh, we gave it thirty-day, uh, comment period since it's a replat. We have received no comments, and the deadline is up on those comments. So we're gonna ask you to go ahead and approve this, uh, replat for Santa Fe subdivision section one.
Make a motion to approve.
Yes, thank you.
Motion Bruce, second from, I think that's Leon.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number fifteen, consider approve request from One Oak for release of surety bond.
Judge, may I make a quick comment and we'll move on into this surety bond? Uh, Dee Dee has got, uh, my laws, uh, that need to be signed today after the meeting. And, um, Commissioner Arthur, if you would, would you pick those things up after, after the guys sign it? And I'm gonna have to track the other commissioners down, that'll be Leon and, and Boo, and get those, uh, my laws executed. And also, uh, Commissioner Arthur, I need you to come by my office to, uh, sign off on a document, uh, for the TIF grant. So that being said, Dee Dee, can you see to it that those my laws are signed off on?
Yes, sir.
All right, One Oak. The, One Oak folks, the Arbuckle Two pipeline has been completed, and I have a request from them to release their three million dollar bond, which is currently on file with County Clerk's Office. Uh, I see no reason that we should not, uh, release this bond, and so we're gonna ask you to go ahead and approve that request at this time.
Hey, David?
Yes, sir.
Is this the, uh, I'm, is this, is this the pipeline company where we have that deposit of money?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it's not, yeah, it's, it's in-hand funding. And, uh, I see, you know, they're, they're out of here. Arbuckle is finished. Uh, this came through.
I've sent in a request, uh, to Matthew, um,
That was a different one.
It's a different one, Matthew?
Yeah, that was, uh, Kinder Morgan.
Ah, okay.
Yes, sir, that is, that is Kinder Morgan, and I've been chasing that one for you, but so far, no luck yet.
Okay.
So I, I do recommend that, that the Arbuckle Two line for One Oak, uh, go ahead and be released on their surety bond. Uh, we got some money upfront on that one, and I'm, I'm pretty pleased with everything. They've been a good pipeline contractor. They torn up a few items, but they've been small.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Yeah, motion Bruce, second Greg to approve. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number sixteen, consider approve documents in association with the G L O infrastructure grant that has been awarded to Liberty County. These documents require court approval. David, you want to tell us exactly which documents we're looking at?
Okay, gentlemen, these are the grants that have already been awarded to Liberty County. We're trying to, to get everything signed off on and get everything ready to go. Uh, I believe it's four point nine million dollars, and each one of the various precincts got a portion of that allotment. These are housekeeping items, as I like to call them, uh, but they do have to be signed off on. Uh, County Judge is the signatory on it, and they do have to be sent back to our grant consultant and placed on file with G L O.
Are we standing on the, uh, environmental impact? Are they working on that right now on the road and the bios?
I understand that they have begun that effort, yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Bruce, Greg on the motion, second. And that's, thank you, gentlemen. Number seventeen, consider approve A R O C Liberty County Purchasing, uh, to prepare and advertise for R F Ps for Liberty County jail operations contract. As y'all know, we received a letter from, uh, G L O where they stated they have no intention of turning back and, uh, on the next go-round, and Sheriff doesn't surprise you one bit, does he?
Yeah.
Well, I was getting kinda tired of going Austin and cutting for him, to tell you the truth, that's just another story there anyway. But, uh, the, uh, we have an idea after the last, uh, turnover from C E C to G L O about what our costs will be in the future for this, uh, you know, should we go out for, uh, a jail operator, a contractor? And, uh, but being the times that we're in right now, uh, I think it'd be pretty difficult to go ahead and start this R F P process and get these out, and so we can at least have maybe sixty days, uh, maybe ninety days at the most to review these contracts, uh, or review the R F Ps as they come back in. And then, uh, should we have to go back out for a second for some reason? We have, uh, out with my time, but I got a feeling we're all gonna end up in maybe two bidders anyway, so. And that's, I'm probably pushing, might even say in two bidders, you might just have one bidder. But, uh, we need to go and get this started, so I appreciate, I appreciate the Court's, um, allowing Harold to go ahead and send out these R F Ps.
When, when does D O's contract expire?
September thirtieth.
Yeah. That made me regret.
Well, I forget.
Second.
Okay, uh, Leon add on?
Leon, you have to sing, aye?
Yes.
Yeah, motion Greg, second Leon. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Time to adjourn. Somebody will make a motion?
Make a motion.
Bruce got a motion. Greg got to sing. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Come on, we got one more time.
Ah.
Uh, all right, we're adjourned, thank y'all.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.